Time and place set for the regular November meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. It was bumped one week. I will call the meeting to order, and I'll have the commission and staff introduce themselves, starting down there with Ann Thibki.
I'm Ann Thibki. Good evening.
Charlene Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twing, Director, Community Development.
Aaron Leal, City Attorney.
Woody Gantina.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
And I'm Gary Casado, the chairperson. All right. Bill, before we go any further here and get into the approval of the minutes, I want to ask if anybody has anything to add to the agenda tonight. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the approval of the October 11th, 2022 meeting minutes. If the commission has had a chance to look at the minutes, and is there any comments, questions, or a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion approved of the minutes, and a second. I will call for a voice vote. By the way, there's only four of us here, but we do have a quorum having four of us, so we'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's four and oh, so minutes are approved. All right. The next order of business is public comment on non-agenda items. So if you have public comment, and I'm going to say even if it is on agenda item and you're not permitted to talk because it's not a public hearing, I suppose that's okay too. So is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Gentleman in the back, in the maroon. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. I'm here to speak about the Chicken Shack variance for flashing and crawl sign, the lights on the sign. Flashing or crawl signs are prohibited for the same reason that Chicken Shack is requesting the variance. They're a distraction to the traffic. The sign ordinance under Dick Krupp court enforcement, code enforcement, prohibited signs overhanging the public right-of-way and provided for the removal of existing non-complying signs after 25 years. I was on the Sign Board of Appeals at that time, and I can tell you that it was more than 25 years ago, and neither Tim Twing or I can remember exactly how long that was. But anyway, the Sign Board of Appeals had a firm policy against additional signs overhanging the public right-of-way. The intent was to clean up Woodward Avenue from the sign pollution left over from the drive-in restaurant days. Woodward Avenue looked like a Vegas strip, and if you look at the photo that we passed out earlier, that's a 13-mile road looking northwest on Woodward Avenue. Apparently Chicken Shack and the Golf Store south of Webster slipped through the cracks. The Golf Store has two signs on the same building that also overhang the public right-of-way. My primary concern is that Chicken Shack, the Chicken Shack sign being new, will set a precedent for additional variances on Woodward. So if there are any other appeals for overhanging signs on Woodward, please deny them. We don't want to end up like the photograph. And also, I ask that you not approve the flashing lights and the crawl signs since it's a distraction to drivers. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I think we had another hand up back there. Again, please introduce yourself for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sean Walzki. I live at Maplewood, 2455 Maplewood, 12-mile Woodward. Just two topics, general topics. Just moved to Royal Oak in February. Two things. One, Woodward, and I lived in Ferndale, had this issue there too. Woodward is way too big. It's eight lanes across. As a pedestrian, I definitely don't feel safe crossing it. I would like to spend my money at businesses along Woodward, but I feel unsafe doing so because I'm right next to traffic. And quite frankly, it also looks kind of ugly along the side of Woodward, the businesses, just kind of like deteriorating sidewalk. I think it would be good to have a road diet. Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge are taking this on. I understand that is owned by the state of Michigan. I get that that's not under the control of Royal Oak, but I've talked about the city council, and I want to talk about it here, too. I think it's important for all levels of government to take this seriously. It's dangerous. People die along these busy roads. It's 50 miles an hour. Most people go around 60. It's very, very large. And last point, I-94 in McComb County carries a lot more cars per day than Woodward and has only six lanes across. I get that it's a highway, but still, it's interesting. Two, as a new, I just bought a house with my partner. Really grateful to have gotten a house in Royal Oak. However, that's really difficult for most people my age. Housing is very expensive. Royal Oak's actually a little bit better than most cities in the area, but it's still very expensive and continuing to get more expensive in Royal Oak. I would like the Planning Commission to consider more opportunities to allow more housing, particularly more affordable housing in Royal Oak, more kinds of housing. I got a small little starter house, which is really nice, but nobody really builds those anymore, and so it would be really nice for that to be a new thing. Other than that, I appreciate the city's efforts on climate change and climate resilience, and I would encourage that to continue. Other than that, thank you for your time.
And thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the special land use, but we're going to wait just a moment and let Commissioner Douglas get some H2O. All right, back on the record here. All right. New business, public hearing, special land use permit in the site plan, SP 22-11-18. This is Detroit Eatery at 200 to 204 West Fifth Street. Mr. Twing, can you give us a preview?
This property and site is located on West Fifth Street. It is located in the Central Business District of the zoning district and falls under the provisions of that zoning district. The petitioner, the requests in front of you this evening, they have an existing restaurant, Detroit Eatery. They are expanding into the space next door, which used to be Cafe de Marquet, which was also a restaurant. The real issue that's in front of you this evening under the special land use is they want approval for a walk-up service window, which is treated as outside service. And in that zoning district under the Central Business District, it is considered a special land use. So we have noticed that activity for a public hearing. They are modifying the floor plans of the restaurant, but as I indicated, technically they were both restaurants previously. There is an outside service that was previously approved patio to the east of the building. You can see that in the pictures, but what they're asking for, that's under consideration this evening, as I said, was the walk-up service window, and that's the special land use request addition. Terms of the site plan, you do have a floor plan in your packet. The staff write-up, the primary item would be that it's subject to City Commission approval of a license agreement for the walk-up service in that all patrons would be using the public right-of-way to stand and use the public right-of-way to access that walk-up window. The other contingencies are standard contingencies regarding any lighting and signage and performance bonds for the proposed work. As I said, you've got a floor plan and site plan in your packet. If there's questions of either, I'd be happy to address them.
If anyone has questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, and I just want to sort of focus on that. I understand it's really only one issue. It's the walk-up because the people are going to queue on the sidewalk, much like some of the ice cream places that you see along Woodward. Those people have to have a license as well. Is that everybody who does it has a license?
Well, there's twofold. There is the special land use item in terms of it being outside service, which previously wasn't approved as part of any prior approval. If it was a walk-up window, you wouldn't need the license. That was access from private property. You wouldn't need the license agreement, but since they want to use the public right-of-way for that, it kicks in the need for the license agreement.
Okay, and I have a vague recollection that there was a service window facing east, but that's now no longer a service window.
It's still depicted on their site plan, if floor plan's facing out to the east.
It didn't look operable to me, but I guess we can ask the petitioner, so.
Still depicted.
All right. All right, and Mr. Gantina?
Just a quick clarification. Is it currently being used for the walk-up service? And this is sort of an after-the-fact request that's in here, or is this a new request that they intend to use?
Yes, there's been several modifications to the building, primarily a lot of them, I think, occurred during COVID and the operation of COVID. They were done without permits, and now that they're wanting to expand into the space next door, it's kind of a catch-up on some things that have occurred, again, without any city approvals for the space. So yes, it used to be, what was approved previously, had a roll-up door and inside seating and dining, and the outside patio was to the east.
And just as a factual matter, I actually stood on the sidewalk, queued up for my food to dig, because I ordered lunch from there. So yes, I can tell you that's exactly what's happening. So, all right, if we can have the petitioner come forward, introduce yourself, and tell us why you would be entitled to the relief you seek.
I'm Chester Stambien, architect for the project, and Joel is the one operating the facility, who could explain why these changes were made and take over.
So my partner, Duran, is also a percentage of the business. What happened was during COVID, everything was closing down. We had, we're basically 80% delivery service, Uber Eats, GrabHub, DoorDash, Eat Street, and people were coming in. Just, I don't know if you guys knew, that inside that area, it's only 400 square feet. We can literally maybe put a table, and there was a bathroom in the corner. So what we did was said, you know what, we need to run the business during COVID. How do we do that? And I personally came out and I made a countertop, and I took the garage door and I placed it on top of the countertop, and it was all COVID-proof. It was a glass. We had a little mic in between like this right here, and any orders that came in, we took the orders through the mic, and I made a little box to put the carryout through the counter. And it worked. The next two years, it worked fine. Now what's happening is we do still have that side window, but we don't utilize it because there's parking there, and people don't see that side window. So we're just utilizing that front space, and it's been working for us, and we wanted to keep it because now, because we're open till 3, 4 o'clock in the morning Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it helps us with all the people that come from O20s and Fifth Avenue and the new third-floor nightclub. They're all outside, and we're inside, and we don't have to deal with all the drunks and everything put together. So that kind of helped us out. That area is now storage. The bathroom is storage, and then we opened up the space in next door, so we're thinking that after 10:00, we'll close that down, and before 10:00, it will just be dining area, and we'll just leave what we have right now as how it is.
And if I may add.
Please.
So the road that we are on is, for now, what I can see is permanently closed. So people, you know, sometimes people lining up on the sidewalk, and sometimes, you know, the line might get to the street, and that could be a safety hazard for people, you know, when there are cars going by and stuff like that. But that particular road is, from what I understand, is closed for now, with blockades and everything. And so therefore, there is no public safety hazard due to traffic. Obviously, people are walking around and stuff like that. That's a different situation, but from traffic, there is no safety hazard as far as I can see.
All right. Are there questions for the petitioner? Okay, I have a couple.
Yes.
There's a deck on Fifth Avenue with seating, for seating. Is that yours, or was it?
That used to be for Cafe de Marquet, and that was there. We never did anything with that.
Okay, you're not asking for anything having to do with that deck here?
No. Mr. DeVor passed away. He built that deck. He had, I believe, every year, he got a permit for it. Us taking it over, we don't know yet. We just took it over, and we're figuring all this out right now.
All right. Questions? All right. Why don't we, we have a two-part, first thing is the special land use, so I need to ask, is anybody in the audience, a member of the public, wish to speak on this issue of the special land use for Detroit Eatery? All right, seeing none, I would say if there are no more questions for the petitioner, then we'll bring it back to the side table for discussion. I think you can probably stay put because we have the site plan next.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Commissioner Douglas?
I so admire entrepreneurs and the ways they survived COVID. I mean, I love that story, bringing the garage door down and setting up the table and just figuring out what you had to do. Did you, just as a parenthetical question, did you get any of the funds from the DDA? I mean, because we had recovery funds that helped you with your employment.
No, we didn't. We didn't know about it.
I'm sorry.
We didn't know about it.
But you survived.
Yes.
And hats off to you for that.
We, I'm sorry to cut you off. I built this in my garage, thinking that if this doesn't, this didn't happen, you know, we would have to close down.
Yeah.
So.
I admire your entrepreneurship. I have no problems with the special land use. I mean, you will have to come back to the City Commission for the window service permit, but I, people, you know, customers can easily queue up to the east of your building or hang around on that deck area while they're waiting for their orders. So I'm going to move approval of the special land use.
Is there a second?
I second.
I'm going to say, Mr. Gantina, beat you to it. Second by Mr. Gantina. Further discussion of the special land use approval for the walk-up service. Seeing none, I'm going to call for a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I know that's all four. Anybody opposed? None. So, okay, four to nothing. Congratulations. So you have your special land use. Now we need to talk about the site plan. Mr. Twing, you have anything else to add about this, or?
I do not have anything to additional.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, but I'll turn to my other panelists first. Anybody else have a question? Okay, I do have a question. Are you going to make improvement? I was there today, and it looks like that was built out of OSB board with a lot of paint on it, which you need to keep it from falling apart. I'm just wondering, are there going to be exterior improvements to, like, the columns and the walk-up service and things like that?
Yes, it's definitely going to be, we're going to go back to the drawing board and make sure it's 100% professionally done and, you know, and put it together with Chester's help here. Definitely, yes.
So definitely, if you're asking if you're going to change it to, instead of plywood, you're going to use some exterior wood material?
I am wondering, yes, if you're going to improve the look and the feel and the durability and the materials of the walk-up, are you going to put cladding on the two columns on either side of the walk-up? Are you going to take the banner down with all the menu items on it? What are you, what are you?
The menu, those are already taken down. Oh, the banner? Because we don't have a place to put a menu right now yet. So soon as you approve it, we are going to have a menu that's going to go in a sticker on the window, like we had before.
Okay.
Sticker on the window, or maybe a TV, that's outside TV for a menu. Like I said, during COVID, we didn't know what to do. We were struggling to, like, do we close down for a few months, or do we go out of business? And this came up, and we made it, and it just happened to work for us, and now we're here in front of you guys to get approval. If it approvals, it's not going to look like that. It's going to definitely be professional. It's going to look nice. You know, with Chester's help, we're going to make sure it looks outstanding.
Okay, just wonder if that was in the plans because it's not necessarily evident from what we have in front of us. At least I can't tell. And there's a question real quick. Is that window to the east operable anymore or not?
Because there's vehicles that are parked there. People miss that window, and if it wasn't.
And that parking is not ours, you think?
It's not our parking either, so.
Okay, I was just wondering if it didn't look like it was an operable window anymore. That's what I'm wondering.
We do open it during summertime, but it's never, you know, used.
Use for Tarbys.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, those are my questions. Anybody else have questions for the petitioner? Ann Thibki, nothing? Okay. Discussion on this side of the table? Mr. Gantina?
Just curious. So you have been using it for the walk-up service. Have there, I know that particular block, late night hours with all the clubs, tends to be a bit of a security issue sometimes with the police. Have you experienced any increase in issues or issues at all with the folks that are queuing on the sidewalk and any security issues at all?
No, not at all. We have Royal Oak Police that sits right in the corner, and then people do come, and they're, you know, sometimes they're rowdy here and there. We try to break it up. They know us very well. Apparently, we're our to-go people. After they get out, we're the first ones they hit. And, you know, we entertain. I entertain a lot. I don't know if you ever go there. I have a smaller mic, and I make crack jokes and have fun with everyone, and we never had a problem. And the City of Royal Oak Police Department, they love us. They're like, hey, you know, you control the crowd. And I feel like we're doing two things at the same, you know.
So a lot of people, all of these people who are patrons who are visiting Fifth Avenue or the new bar, when they are pushed out of these bars at 2 o'clock, they have to go home right away. Some of them are driving, some of them, most of them stop by at our restaurant, either waiting in line for like 10, 15, 20 minutes or eating food, and they're waiting at least half an hour if they're stopping by. And I feel like they, it gives them quite a bit of time to sober up and, you know, and everything. It's also definitely, at least hundreds of people every weekend sober up in our restaurant before they hit their road. Either they're Ubering or not. That's a different story. I think that helps out a lot.
All right. Any other questions or discussion between the panelists?
I was just curious, and maybe somebody from the city can answer. Is that street going to stay closed as a pedestrian street?
I can't hear you.
Is the street going to stay closed?
I still don't understand.
Is the street, is Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street going to stay closed?
Well, that's really up to the City Commission. The DDA is looking at making improvements to Fifth Street, and they've hired a design firm to redesign it. So I'm assuming at some point, it'll look different. Whether it's totally closed or partially open will depend on that design.
Thank you.
I heard things about, you know, they're making it to a permanent park or something. That's what I was going to ask.
I would hope so. I think it has benefited the downtown, anyway.
All right. Is there any other comments, questions, or a motion? Mr. Gantina?
I will move to approve the site plan.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any further discussion of approval of the site plan? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call once again for a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, four to nothing. Congratulations. Site plan is approved. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the improvements.
Keep providing an extra red sauce. All right. Next order of business is a sign variance, SP 21-11-06. This is 30402 Woodward Avenue. This is the Chicken Chick Restaurant. Mr. Twing, can you give us a rundown?
You may recall seeing a request at a prior meeting for a sign appeal. Many of the variances that Planning Commission granted at that time have been incorporated and installed. One of the items that the petitioner is asking to include in their sign was not part of the prior variance approvals, which was that the arrow portion of the sign have flashing animated lights included in it, and that is not allowed under the sign ordinance, so it's back in front of you this evening to consider that request for an appeal on the flashing animated lights.
Okay, just, okay, very good. Just to be clear, that aspect of it was not part of the previous. We didn't make a decision on that at any point in time.
No, it wasn't listed as a variance in the request.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Mr. Gantina?
I just want to be clear, a lit sign is allowable. The fact that this is intended to be a flashing or animated sign is why it's in front of us, correct?
Is it?
That's my question. It's not the fact that it's a lighted sign per se, it's the fact that it's a flashing or animated sign that is requiring the variance.
That's correct. It can be lit. It just can't have motion or flashing parts to it under the ordinance. Just want to make sure.
The lights themselves can come on and stay on, but it can't flash at you or move.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Twing before we call the petitioner up? Okay, I know the petitioner's here. Come on up. Introduce yourself for the record, and please tell us why you're entitled to the relief you're requesting.
Sure. Philip Sobek with Chicken Shack. We were doing remodel of the store, and I came before the board, or my aunt did anyway, a year or so ago, because primarily wanted to keep the sign the same as it's been for 35, 45 years, something like that. And the rest of the building, we didn't need any variances for, but we wanted to keep the sign if we were going to do this whole remodel. And we, the architect we had neglected to notice that our old sign had the animated arrow, and so he did list it as a variance we were requesting at that time. So of course, it wasn't approved at that time. So once they actually put it back in, and the city let the guy know that was installing it, that you can't have flashing signs, so he, you know, made an adjustment in the meantime. But I was coming before you, hoping that we could have the original intent, like keeping the original sign. We were cognizant of how ugly the old sign looked with all the steel behind it and the arrows or the guide wires and stuff like that, so we tried to clean it up and make it just part of the building, and also made it a little bit dimmer than the existing sign used to be, just because we didn't really want the, a really stark, bright, white flashing thing does, I think, kind of tacky and ugly, but we hoped to add the nice yellow, warm glow sign that we think looks really nice. So hopefully you guys like the remodel so far, and that's the last piece of it.
All right. Are there questions for the petitioner? I guess I have one. So are you saying that the sign that is installed, in fact, is an animated sign, but that aspect of it was just turned off?
Correct, yes. Yeah, when the city mentioned that issue, it was still in pieces, and they have a switch inside, so the circuit board in there, you can flip a switch to have a slow scroll, or it can just stay stationary is how it's been recently.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a discussion or a motion on this side of the table? Commissioner Douglas?
I'm glad Mr. Harrison is sitting down because I'm about to agree with him. I voted against this projecting sign when it was proposed, and adding flashing lights to it just exacerbates something that I already disagree with, so I'm going to take a swing at making a motion to deny the variance and see what happens.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Gantina. Okay, so discussion. Is there further discussion?
Well, I guess I'll speak to my second. I don't necessarily have an issue with the fact that the sign is lit. I understand that, you know, previously, it may have been a moving animated sign. Looking up that Woodward corridor, I don't know that there's another example of a similar type of animated lit sign like that. I do think it would act as a bit of a distraction to drivers and just not able to support the motion of the sign. I'm okay with the sign, the fact that it's lit. I appreciate that you're actually going to turn down the lumens a little bit in terms of how much light it actually puts out, but But at the same time, I think an animated sign, um, is just not the right fit.
Any other comments? Ms. Bickie.
I just want to make a comment. I appreciate the updates you've been doing. And at first I was a little sad to see the yellow go, but I've adjusted to the orange quite okay. Um, and I agree with my, uh, colleagues here that I think, I'm glad you were able to switch off the, the animation and have the, the lights as they are so that it's, you can still use the sign as it is. But I agree that in this modern time and as we're trying to help Woodward slow down and such, um, for this changing year, I'd, I'd not want to see the movement, uh, lights either. So I'm going to agree with my colleagues.
All right. And I'll pipe up. Uh, when this came before us, it was not an easy decision because it is overhanging. But I think that there was a lot of sentiment that, uh, given the history of Chicken Chick and your well-deserved standing in the community, that people wanted to, they saw public good in preserving the look and feel of that Chicken Chick. And I think that is a valid, uh, that was a valid concern. Had you brought before us at the time that the, the light would be animated, I doubt that that aspect would have been approved. To my mind, the animated light is akin to an animated, um, electronic messaging board sign, which is not, uh, in the, uh, the, the public policy of the city of Royal Oak. In the ordinance is those are not permitted and that there is public good in banning them. So being that this is in that same manner, I also will have to support the motion to deny. I do want to also comment about the degree of the lumens. You know, we, we approved, uh, a rather, uh, a variance on the Owl Restaurant. And when they brought that before us, they had soft yellow lights around the sign. And then they changed them out to glaring LEDs, uh, lights that ruined the whole thing as far as I'm concerned. What you've done is you've been conscious of that and I appreciate that because the sign I think looks good, but the animation I cannot support.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? All right. I'm going to call for the vote to deny the variance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. All right. Thank you very much. Continue and good luck. All right. Next order of business is non-action items. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Twing.
Uh, those are all informational items. You have three of them. You'll have a list of the, uh, site plans that have been, uh, reviewed by staff and administratively approved, either to proceed to, uh, building permits or they were minor modifications that, uh, didn't need planning commission action. And then you have, uh, notices from two other communities regarding their master plans. The one from Ferndale and one from Birmingham. Uh, no actions required on any of those items.
All right. Uh, any questions for Mr. Twing about any of those? All right. Uh, hearing none. Uh, we've run out of things on the regular meeting agenda. And so I guess, do we have to move for, uh, German? I guess we do. Is there, is there such a motion?
I will move to adjourn.
Mr. Cantina moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. We are adjourned. The regular meeting is adjourned. Uh, we'll say, uh, goodbye to our attorney as he's on his way on his vacation for.
Oh, that's fun.
So.
One more hour.
And, uh, we'll move on to the master plan work session. Mr. Twing, can you, uh, lead us into this?
I'll let Mr. Murphy lead in. I know there's a, one of the consultant members here and I believe we were hoping to have, uh, another join us remotely. I'm not sure if he's gotten out of jury duty yet, uh, but that was the holdup. Uh, I believe he was in California too, so, um, I'll turn it over to Joseph to give you the updates.
Uh, well, welcome. Today's a long time in the making. A lot of steps to get to this point, but this is kind of the launch pad for the master plan process for Planning Commission. And we have, uh, joining us in person today is Paul Urbella. He's from McKenna and Associates. They're a subcontractor for DPZ Co-Design. And Matthew Lambert from DPZ Co-Design will be joining us, uh, from the West Coast. He has a, apparently a slight delay, but he'll be joining us, uh, virtually shortly. And what you have included in your packet today is an outline of the time, uh, generalized timeline of the master, for the master plan. And today's conversation is largely going to focus on what DPZ Co-Design has identified as the steps for public engagement. And with that, I can step aside and make a brief call to Richard and W R O K to see if we're still waiting. Uh, and if we are, then.
Shall we take a, a five-minute break to do that?
If you wish, that would be perfectly acceptable. Let's do that.
Let's just stand up. All right.
Heather, do you have an update?
I do not, so I'm assuming that he's still in jury duty. Um, I think Paul is prepared to present without him.
Okay. We'll let Paul.
Just tell him to vote to convict and get down the arm.
I don't know what's more painful, jury duty or having to work with us, right? Apparently.
Thank you.
You, you've been thrown to the wolves in the meantime. So when we reconvene, you, are you familiar with the slides?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you can sit over there and turn the mic on and we, we can, we can, we can work our way through the slides. It's all right.
Yeah, just kind of tell me when you want to move on.
Okay.
But we all wait for.
And you're used to sitting in that seat anyways, but.
I was, uh, last week, I think.
Yes. And the month before for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So you have great familiarity with the city.
With the seat.
And the city in general.
Hey, you want to run this?
Hmm, you want to just give us a head nod and tell us to go to the next slide?
Sure.
Very thematic.
All right. I think we are back to full strength and so we'll, uh, re-engage. And, uh, if I understand correctly, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Urbella, yes?
Uh, yes. I guess so.
You're pinching for math.
Please proceed.
I mean, it's, I guess it's sort of illustrative. Um, the, the team you have is, as you know, is led by DPZ Co-Design. Um, and we at McKenna are their local partners, um, which we, we've partnered with them before. Um, it helps with the time change. Uh, I was originally here just to sort of observe and be part of the team, but I'm happy to take you through this. Um, our, our role on this team, in addition to providing, um, sort of attendance at meetings and, and fill in from, from our local presence, uh, is to help primarily with public engagement. Um, so I'm happy to talk to you and take you through all of that. Um, what you see on the slide is a, uh, we are proposing. So this is a really exciting time. As, as Joseph mentioned, um, we are embarking on this master plan process. We are, um, proposing roughly a 15-month timeline from now until, um, adoption, which is, we're aiming at January 2024 for that. Um, and what the team is doing now is mobilizing essentially and getting ready to, we're, we're planning for public engagement, which is the very first step, the early public engagement. Um, we are doing the very beginning of the technical analysis and research. Um, and, and starting to schedule or, or look to schedule and refine. A list of people will engage early in the process, um, to sort of get a, a sense of what, um, to sort of familiarize the consultants, the entire consultant team with the issues, um, at hand, the strategic issues about this master plan. Um, and, and so there, there's several, um, the, the public engagement process has several main facets, I guess. They're, they're all here in the, in slides that follow the, there's a little bit more detail about all of them. But essentially for the next calendar quarter, um, we'll be doing, we'll be planning and implementing the initial public engagement process, which is to launch a pub, a project website, um, to do a series of one-on-one interviews. I'll get into those in a minute. Um, a series of focus group style, uh, roundtable discussions, uh, public survey and some mapping exercises that will be hosted on the website. And will allow the public to sort of, um, start to, in, in response to some prompts and some posed questions, uh, it will allow the public to tell us what the strategic issues are, what the, um, the community's aspirations are for the future and how that should inform the master plan. Um, so that, that timeline is essentially from now until February. Um, we will present the results of that, uh, at the end of first quarter 2023. Um, and while we are, while the, that input is happening, basically, um, we're planning for the charrette process scheduled tentatively for May 2023. Um, the charrette, as you were, I think everyone in this room is familiar. I, I apologize. This is my first, uh, meeting as part of this process, including the, the, um, the response to the proposal, but I think the, a lot of this may, might have been discussed that the, um, the public engagement that our team presented was, the linchpin of it was the charrette process, which is a more than a week, um, intensive sort of design exercise that where the, the national consultants come in and are resident in Royal Oak for that time. Um, they operate, open up and operate a studio where they accept the public into the design process, um, have a few closed-door sessions where they work things out and then, um, sort of, uh, do a series of presentations as well. Um, so the charrettes aimed for, planned for May of 2023. Um, I, thank you for advancing the slides. I'll, um, I won't dwell on each step because they, they are in the slides as we go. Um, the, uh, so I, I talked about the webs, or the website and I think we, can we go back to the website slide? Um, I, I sort of gave a brief overview of that, but basically there's a series of things that we are proposing to put on the website. The website will be a, a sort of a catch-all of, um, information that exists. Uh, people will be able to interact with it throughout the process to get an update of how, of where it is.
Paul?
Yes.
If, I mean, that's a separate dedicated website, so it's not, it's, it's not a component or not separate pages on the city's website. It's a separate website, which we'll obviously have a hyperlink to on the city's website. And individuals will be able to sign up to get notifications that get posted on that separate website through the city's notify me functionality on the city's website. So anything that gets updated on that? Will anyone that signed up for notify me would receive those?
Thank you. Yes. Um, and so, yes. And I think the, the project specific website is a, it's a good idea to just sort of, um, to have it separate. We, we have, as Joseph just said, um, we're working to integrate it so that any input, any, um, new stakeholders that are done, identified through this process are available to the city, um, in the future. And, and that contact information is there. Um, so I, I started to mention the interviews and the roundtables. The idea here, I think the important thing to say about these is that, um, the consultant team has varying degrees of experience with this community. Um, and, and regardless of where we're working, this is an important first step to sort of get a high-level, um, understanding of what the strategic issues are and to garner ideas from yourselves, from all of the city commissioners and from some key staff about what, what we should talk about and what we should test as we go, in public and, and seek out opinions from the broader community. Um, so the, this step really helps narrow that conversation down. Or, or I guess narrow down, narrow it down is not the right word, but, but broaden the conversation. Identify out of what the, the possible topic areas you might consider in a master plan, what are the most important for us to design to, for us to test out as we, um, as we move along and, and design the master plan. Uh, there are several surveys, uh, that we are planning. The, the mapping input is one of them that I mentioned. The, in the, in the beginning stages, that's very high-level sort of, um, what is your favorite place in Royal Oak? What, what's your big idea for Royal Oak? And, um, identifying areas of problems that need to be addressed. The, uh, the charrette, as I mentioned, is a, it's an intensive week-long exercise, um, whereby there, there's a, an in-depth exploration of all these issues. Um, it's sort of built on the, the research and the, the input that's been conducted to, to date. Um, the drop-in studios is a strategy that we've employed, um, with good effects uh, in the past. And, and essentially those are, those are open houses where we would staff, um, we would provide staff so that the public can come back into the room, understand the results of the charrette and have one-on-one conversations if they so desire. This, this slide is just sort of a, at a high level, um, how we're going to approach this over the next 15 months. Basically, um, in this first phase, we're going to listen a lot and we're going to come back to you, the Planning Commission, um, with what we've heard and what we've found from all the technical analysis, um, to sort of check in to course correct and, and essentially report back before, uh, Phase Two starts, which is the centered around the charrette, um, where we will be proposing a direction based on the analysis that we've done. Um, and, and devising proposals within that charrette. Then, then we will then, uh, report back to you at the end of that phase. Um, and, and Phase Three, after we've had this back and forth of, um, input, sort of synthesis and design and then course correction with you, um, we'll come back with a draft master plan and the statutory requirements for input and adoption with that. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I heard a, I don't know if that ding was Matt coming on or not.
Yeah. Seems like something.
It is.
Now would be a good time to have him join us.
How does it happen? What's going to happen?
It's not looking too good up there.
I can, I can hear things.
Oh, yeah.
Can you see us?
I, I can see Paul.
Yeah, Paul is like this.
I think Matt is looking at the. There you go.
Oh, there you are.
Paul, Paul was kind enough to, kind enough to give us, uh, an overview and go through the slides. Uh, perhaps if you have anything to, to, uh, minor to add at this point. Otherwise, I think probably, uh, you, I think you'd be wise if you could do a brief introduction. And I think the Planning Commission may very well have some questions about those different stages and, uh, what's expected from them and how to move forward.
Sure, sure. Thanks. Uh, and I didn't, uh, catch all of it, um, since I just happened to join. Um, uh, timing lucky, you started a little bit earlier than I could have, uh, delayed in, in, in jury in, in a court case. Um, in, in any case, uh, what we wanted to put together really was, uh, a description of, uh, of, of the process that we typically go to, go, go through or we've, we've, um, really assembled for, uh, for this, uh, instance. Uh, and I think the, the main point that we want to get across is that, uh, that we really don't make assumptions at the beginning, uh, really for anything. Um, it's kind of an open book. Uh, in a way, it's, it's lucky that Michigan's, uh, requirements for, uh, for master plan are, are pretty broad. So we really want to begin from the standpoint of hearing from you all, uh, hearing specifically from, from identified others. Uh, and, and I know that there's a, a discussion around that that we certainly want to have with, with you in terms of what that means. Uh, to us, what that means is to, to start to get the groundwork of, of an understanding to, to begin to have engagement and questions with, um, with the general public, uh, going, going to them, uh, closer to their homes and places of, of business, inviting them, uh, uh, to them, closer to their homes and places of business, inviting them to the charrette later. I think though, an important piece, and I'm sure Paul touched on it, is that we, after getting that information and starting to build a picture of what the, the community is telling us, we want to bring that back to you all in conversation, see, see what you all think, to help provide that direction going into the charrette. And the point in, in the charrette process is to, is to really make, take that information and start to make proposals, present the background that we've, we've studied to the public, talk to them about it, make proposed solutions, and, you know, paste them up and ask people what they think, ask you all what you think about those early on in the process. And then, you know, as Paul mentioned, we, we want to do these drop-in studios afterwards, which is really to catch people that weren't able to, to show up, that's also paired with posting all this information on the website, some additional surveying, additional opportunities for people to make comments on, on a map, which I understand you've, you've employed a bit with the, with the parks plan, we've, we've done this plenty in other places as well. And that's, that's all to, to get as much direction from, from you all, from the, from the public, and to have a first sort of check-through of all the proposed solutions, so that when we get into the, the process of, of writing the first draft plan, that we're going in the right direction, and we can really start to refine from there with input from the public and input from, from you and conversations in planning commission meetings. So I think that's really just the, the gist of it in, in a nutshell, so I'm sure you'll have some, some questions, and I'm happy to provide any, you know, any background answers. Thanks.
Are there questions? Ms. Bickie.
I can think of probably lots of questions, but I'll start with this one, is there room in the input process for having walk, or including wheelchair and maybe bike audits in terms of mobility corridors? Since we are a community that is walkable and would like to enhance that walkability in, in the corridors and the access to various points that are neighborhood business or downtown, et cetera, will that be part of the study? Rather than just in a room, it's not quite the same thing as being out and going, you know, from one destination to another and such?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're certainly open to, to whatever we need to, to do, it's really this, this question that we're bringing to you, you know, what are the, the big priorities and how we best engage on those? And so that, that sounds great, we would normally do those anyways, and we're happy to do those with people from the community.
Sorry, just, you said you normally do them on your own, is that what you were saying? I didn't quite catch what you said.
Oh, yes, yes, normally we would do those on our own, but we're happy to, to do those with others.
I see, okay, thank you.
Do you have more? I do, but I can take a turn, you know, give a turn.
You can keep going, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. You're on roll.
Okay, I guess the other question I had was, looking at coming together as a community on this and, and undertaking the master plan, are there specific maybe either background readings or suggestions that you think would be useful that, that we would come together and had some, have some shared reference, point of reference that would help us with this process?
I don't offhand at the moment, but that's something that we can certainly put together. I think that is, that's a good idea, you know, the sort of public understanding of, of, you know, there's a lot of issues to deal with in a master plan, and in part, one thing that helps is to get, gain an understanding of the issues that people have in concern. There's also all the, the topics of, say, current best practices in, in planning and our design, so I think there's, there's a, there's a broad range. I think we can certainly provide that in part, we can provide that in, in reference on the project website, perhaps, in part, we can provide more background of that while we conduct the charrette process, or even associated with, say, the, the roundtable process, so there's a number of touchpoints that we could, we could really dive into those, those topics. I would just begin with, with sort of getting the understanding of what the areas of concern are, so we can sort of narrow that down, but if, if you all have some specific areas to, to begin with, or even just an overview of, say, where, where planning is, has been and is going, that's fine as well.
Commissioner Bickie, were you, you were asking for the planning commission?
Is that the question you're looking for?
About the perspective?
About the shared understanding provided to the.
Well, for the planning commission, anyone who's involved in the city commission, basically everybody involved, so something that would be, I mean, a shared, a shared perspective before you're trying to get input, I think is helpful, again, people don't know what they don't know, and so if there's, there's things that will help people engage more effectively with this process, I think it would be useful to have those suggested. So that's, that's what I was asking, whether, whether it's articles, or an overview, or whatever it would be, I think it just helps for you to be on the same page, even as you gather that input, so that's what I was thinking.
Sure, because a certain, I mean, a part of the website that we typically deploy that's in the, in your pre-read is, is sort of a, what is a master plan process and what are we talking about here? Because this is a huge opportunity to educate everyone about, you know, what the, what we're trying to do and how this can set an aspiration and set sort of a direction for the community, so I think it's a great idea to add articles based on specific topics, but a certain amount of that, we, we're planning to build into the website design.
Sounds good.
Paul, I would include just, you know, it's, it's kind of timely actually, because last, just last week, there was, you know, an email list conversation in, say, the, the planning circles around urbanism, collecting those, those particular articles or, or references, and also some YouTube playlists that were recently shared, so, you know, I can share those with, with Paul, and we can sort of sort it through and, and see what might be most relevant in this instance.
Keep going.
Do you have more, keep going.
Really?
Yeah. Might as well do it all in chunks.
Well, because you might ask the question I'm gonna ask, and then I won't need to.
Okay, this, this little, last one, then I won't pass it over. Talking about the perspective of the community, I, I think you've already been reminded of this, but again, we've had the aging in place, the sustainability, and obviously, we're involved in the parks, and so I think we had a fair amount of engagement just in the last couple of years, that, that I think have helped bubble up some of those issues, whether it's green space, or housing, or mobility and such. So I'm sure some things will be repeated, but I think that's also just a good starting point, because we have had a lot of that work in the last couple of years. I guess that's a comment more than a question.
Absolutely, and I just, I would say that part of the charge in the Parks Master Plan is to recognize the significant amount of planning work that's been done, and so we can definitely share that with our team going forward, yeah.
So it's actually a great segue into my question. With respect to the interviews and roundtables phase, perhaps it's more of a question for our side, how are we determining and communicating to the consultants, the groups that we want to make sure take part in that process? I was specifically thinking of the Aging in Place Task Force, as well as the Environmental Advisory Board, you know, we've kind of recognized that the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan was a pretty important document, guiding document for our city. And I just, I want to make sure that I'm understanding how we're communicating, who should be coming to the table, which additional groups, obviously, this isn't an exhaustive list here, but what other groups are going to be brought in to be a part of that process? Is that something where the expectation is that us as the planning commission communicate to you and Joe and Tim, who we would like to see there, or is there already a list that's, you know, been put together that we would take a look at? I guess, talk to me a little bit about that interaction of how we would communicate to you, the groups that we think are important to bring to the table?
Sure, I think those can be referenced tonight, they were kind enough to point out that they're able to conduct up to 30 interviews within 30 separate individuals, up to a 30-minute timeframe for each of those individuals, so that's, that's quite a bit of time dedicated to a large number of people. And the, the list that, we've come up with an internal list, and obviously, that involves interviewing each of you individually as planning commission members, as well as city commission members, and then we've noted some significant chairs of some significant boards, DDA, some of those that you had referenced, some, some key staff members, say, manager, city engineer, Department of Public Works Director, and some outside entities as well, executive directors of the chamber, or other groups representing the, one of the, one of the points that is on that, on the screen in front of us, the, on the roundtable, our business, so that would be the chamber, and several institutional representatives as well, such as maybe somebody that represents an executive director of a youth organization, or others of that nature. So if you have any particular, you know, we, we got pretty close to 30, so if you, you think there's somebody that you think is missing, by all means, you can reference that today.
Well, the EAB specifically would be one that I would want to make sure is included somehow, whether it be during the roundtables, or an interview of our chair.
And Tim and I did discuss that internally, and some of the groups, like the Environmental Advisory Board, and the senior, the Aging in Place Task Force, and the Parks and Rec Master Plan, those documents are already produced, and they're very, very, very fresh, and they identify the very specific things that we're, that we're moving forward with as a city, and the things that need to be incorporated into the master land use process as well. So I'm not entirely sure that we need to interview the, for instance, the chair of the environmental, or the Aging in Place Task Force, if they have already produced in a very short while, the final document, that's, that was their mission, was to produce that document, which we can then hand to the consultant, and it should speak for the entire board and their, and their work, their body of work.
So that makes sense to me from an interview perspective, understanding that we've got limited interview opportunities as part of the scope of work. I do think it's important for all of the groups to still continue to stay engaged, despite the fact that their work output may be very fresh, and I agree with you, it's no sense in redoing a bunch of work, at the same time, I, I just think it is important for those groups to stay engaged. Would you suggest then that they are somehow incorporated into some of the roundtable discussions, where it's maybe opened up to those groups, to where if members of those boards or task force would like to attend those roundtable discussions, the opportunity is available to them?
Yes, any, any and all of those boards and their members are individually very much encouraged to come to the roundtables and the charrettes. The, the one thing that when we were in conversation about this particular step was a clarification on their part, that this step isn't intended to give someone a louder, or a group a louder voice at this point, or have a greater presence at the table, this particular step and interviewing a broad range of individuals is for the consultants to give, to get that broad understanding of what the, the general topics, hot topics, positive things, negative things, changes, what have you, going on in the city. It isn't to give one group or another preference, and we say, well, we're not going to allow that group to, to be able to be represented here, it's just to give them broad understanding, so that when they start to do the neighborhood meetings, when we start to do the online surveys, the paper surveys, the online mapping feature, that they have an understanding of what the general things are going on in the city. Some of those neighborhood meetings will bring out things that perhaps that first set of roundtable discussions, no one was representative of, but that's really the intent, it's not to give anyone more, a louder voice, a bigger seat at the table, but of course, at any individual group, anyone that's a member of a board or commission is highly encouraged to participate through online surveys, mapping, the online mapping feature, coming to the charrette, all of it, portions of it, if it's in their neighborhood, that particular group. So we, we don't want to give anyone any greater voice, but we want to encourage everybody. Because I think, I think in the past, there, there's been, at the end of the process, I know, that there was conversation that, well, this group was given a louder voice than the others, and that creates a lot of animosity, and I don't think it provides a lot of uniform confidence in the document and how we're moving forward as a city. So I think to be as inclusive as possible, we encourage everybody to participate at all of those different levels, but that's not the real intent of that particular stage that we're discussing.
True, I think that makes sense. The, the list of, the list of the 30 interviews, is that something that can be provided to us simply from informational standpoint?
Yes, absolutely.
Just so we know.
You got more? You got more?
I'm, I'm good for right now.
Okay. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One question, Mr. Lambert, has to do with your communications plan. We, we know there are people in Royal Oak who are not connected, not digitally literate, and we want to make sure that they have opportunities to participate as well, and I'm not, you may not have done an analysis of the communication tools that are at your disposal, but if you have, I'd be interested in hearing how you'll make sure that everybody has a chance to participate.
And I, I think, Paul, if you could start with that, because you all are most familiar with the tools that are available at hand, and then we can talk about perhaps the, the best ways to engage with those portions of the community that, that are not likely to use the digital tools, because there's a number of ways, and I think just, it helps to understand what works best for this community.
Sure. And so, in, in the, in the pre-read, we've sort of provided the, the broad spectrum of methods that we typically use. I think we are in the, we are right now embarking on the process of designing the, the communications program, so I think, I think we are cognizant of certain constituents that are really important to, to, that are underrepresented typically in these processes, and, and I think, I guess it's a place-specific solution that has not been designed yet, but we are conscious of providing hard copies of survey mechanisms, for, for example, and making sure that those are available at places where non-digital natives gather, and things like that. We had, we had one, one, one of our going-in propositions for roundtable discussion is to find a way to have a discussion around youth, youth representatives, because youth are another constituency that is typically difficult to engage in a process like this, so we want to be conscious of that, especially in the early phases, so that we have that voice in, in the conversation. But there's, I think from, the, the bulk of the communication is digital, just because it's the most efficient, and what we are trying to do is backfill targeted, targeted communications, the targeted methods, where we know that we're not, there are certain constituencies that we know we're not going to reach that way, and I guess that's another place where we look for the administration's guidance, and for your guidance, if you have specific, again, constituencies or groups that have been difficult to engage here in the past, that, that you know will, will require a special strategy for.
And maybe more, maybe an easier way to ask the question would be, can you give examples of other communities or techniques you, or Mr. Lambert for that matter, have used in other communities, where you successful, where you succeeded in bringing in people who are not, you know, not digitally adept, not wired?
I mean, we've, we've, so, the, you know, the, I think the best way to do that, it's sometimes more expensive, but physically mailing, mailing survey mechanisms, I think, providing them in places like the senior center, and places that, that you know people will gather, we've, we've done that, and sort of, we've left sort of passive input, designed passive input opportunities in, it's important to carefully deploy them, but in places like the library and civic places, where people can participate in a similar exercise that we're asking people to do on, on a website or in a mapping exercise, and then we just monitor those and, and collect them, that's something we do frequently.
Well, you know.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, there's a lot of options with this, and I think it's worth talking through, and I think this is definitely a, a good way that I think we should focus in on, on the plan and, and update it in some way, so getting. on the plan and update it in some way. So getting the announcement out is important, and, you know, of course, normally that's the digital ways, but there's also, you know, this all gets into sort of, you know, what is the level of, say, expense on the communication side that's available. But we've done, say, yard signs around town before, maybe not on like the survey, but announcing the process, and handouts with, you know, about the master plan process, how you get involved, when the timing for major things are, how to keep up to date with the schedule, posting of schedules up. That can be done, obviously, in public places like libraries, and City Hall, and police and fire stations, but also could be something that we engage with the DDA, and their connections to local businesses, to post things in the windows of businesses, or have these sort of informational brochures available. Because I think the key is, we want people to know that this is happening, right? And we want to know what it is, and we want them to know that we want their input, and that there are many ways for them to be engaged. And that's outside of the, say, the survey piece. Surveys, usually, like, that's been best to do a paper copy and put those in the library, and at City Hall, and, you know, perhaps some other civic buildings, but, you know, that just gets into a question of how many pages can you, can you print and deliver? Like, you can't deliver that easily to everybody at their address, not that you couldn't, but there becomes a sort of cost barrier at a point. So I think there's a lot of options, and I think we're open to, to ideas of what might work for constituents in Royal Oak.
So I will let you know, and Mr. Bell may know this, that we have a quarterly magazine that goes to every household in the city. It's called Insight, but it has long lead deadlines. So I would say perhaps your number one timing priority is to find out what the publication deadlines are for that, and, because that reaches every household in Royal Oak. And it's, when we were going through our Aging in Place Task Force research, we held focus groups, and people, the focus groups, somebody would say, well, I don't know what's going on, and somebody else would say, just read the insight. So it does touch people. So there's that. I will tell you that, and I knew this going in, I mean, I know how your charrette process works, and I understand that, but as I look at the sample time label, or timetable that you provided for your week-long charrette, I see that, according to my calculation, 70% of those activities take place between 9:00 and 5:00, when people have jobs and are working. And yet, those people, perhaps younger, in the workplace, are the people who will be most affected by the master plan, as they stay in our community and age in our community. And I, how do you, and I understand you do surveys, and you do focus groups, and you listing stuff, but this is the nuts and bolts of drawing what our city is going to look like, and I don't see how people of working age can participate. How have you overcome this elsewhere?
I just want to make one comment. Let's remember that some people work second and third shift, and some people are available during the day. So even if 70% are at that time, that does not mean that eliminates the majority of the workforce. Not everyone works during those hours.
Fair enough. But still--
I agree they should be distributed, but I, there's more of a range of people that would attend.
Sure. Now, typically, you know, I think the schedule is a sample, because we want it to be kind of open to coordination with you all, and what's going to be the best for engagement. Normally, we deal with that by having our major information gathering presentations and open houses in the evenings. And it really depends on when we start and end. A charrette is typically a big question with the community, and which days presentations and open houses land on. Often, we will, to us, that sort of second, that what we call midterm, often usually is an open house. That event, we normally would try to get on a Saturday in many places, so that we get more people able to come out in the community if they can't do it during the week. Now, in some places, a Saturday doesn't work, and they'd rather have it on a Friday. I think that's, you know, that's totally up for debate. And then similarly, we schedule a lot of meetings during the day, when we're trying to, especially if we're trying to, say, access the business community, or, say, MDOT, or somebody like that, that we want to bring in around a very specific topic. But that doesn't preclude having activities later in the day. I mean, honestly, we're just, we're there the whole time, so it's really about figuring out when and what topics are best. And so, we normally, again, we have the sort of longer weekend open house, the major presentations and discussions in the evenings, but also that follow-up drop-in studio. The purpose of that is to sort of run from, say, noon till 7:00, you know, we can figure out what the hours are, over a couple of days, you know, probably a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, to try to catch people who may not have been able to participate in the charrette process. And they can, from there, come in, talk to us about what was presented, discussed, what the outcomes were, and get their input on those if they weren't able to attend during the process. Then also, that is the goal with additionally having survey following, which has the outcomes of the process, and getting input on that. That's both digital and in print, probably in the public buildings. And then engagements with this commission, discussion the outcomes, and, you know, typically you have opportunities for public input in those instances, too.
Yeah. So, to clarify, so I'm looking at the sample week that was included in your doc. Oh, it's up on the screen, I see that. So where we see "Design Continues," this is, describe what that's like, what all of those different time segments are like, what's happening then?
Sure. So there's, there's a big three presentations, which is normally, you know, the opening, where we talk about what has, you know, sort of the input that we've gotten so far, the analysis that we've done, and our understanding of where we're going, and what this process is going to look like. The middle one, which is an open house to get interaction on all the ideas, and the one at the end, to lay out what we've come to through this week, which I'll describe in a moment, so that people can absorb that and provide us feedback at that point. There's a second tier of meetings. Those are the ones that are listed during the day. Those are typically related to a specific topic, usually transportation, housing, maybe stormwater. It really, really depends, you know, maybe because the, because the Climate Action Plan is so critical, that we want to talk about, specifically about how that relates to land use and the land use plan. So maybe we'll have a meeting based on that specific subject. So those tend to be, they're just a little bit smaller, so they're a little more manageable, but open to the public. Now, in between those times, there's sort of "Design Continues," and there's these little gaps that might say "Design" in there. Basically, what that is describing is that we'll have a team of, say, 10 people, 12 people, something, something like that, who are from, all the team members, and many from DPZ's office. And they'll be set up in the same room that all these, all the things are happening. Ideally, we want to be in the same place, so everybody can hear. And people are working on tables on aspects of the land use plan. That may be the proposals for the future land use, that may be specific design proposals or interventions that are for, to address locations or issues that have come up through conversation. They may be something related to policy recommendations. So those are things that we learn by taking the input, making proposals, and sort of modifying those. So that's all happening at the same time that these other meetings are going on. Now, there's this whole open studio, closed studio, that we also discuss, which we can provide specific times, where we just invite the public to come around to the desks where people are working on things, and talk to them about what they're working on. We can't do that all the time, because we wouldn't get, you know, we wouldn't be able to get the work done. So we'll say, some hours may be closed studio hours, where people are working without interruption, but then there may be open studio hours, often, say, between meetings, if people want to chat with folks that are working on a specific topic.
Okay, thank you. I heard some of that. Well, I will just say that, as you put our final timetable together, I'm going to be looking to have you find as many ways as possible to do the crucial elements of your work at a time when everyone can attend. And I would also like to say, and this isn't necessarily for you, but for staff, is that I'd like to see us provide babysitting during evening hours. And I don't know where that, what, but that would come from. It shouldn't be that expensive, but I think that makes it possible for young families to attend and participate, and I want to encourage that.
Matt, can you give an example of how, during this process, if someone were unable to physically come to the meeting, but they wanted to periodically view what was going on, do you utilize things like, what am I thinking, Facebook Live?
Yeah, livestream.
Livestreaming on Facebook, and things of that nature, where people can check in on the progress, and even to the point where, after the fact, if they wanted to watch all of it, they could go on somewhere and watch that video?
Yeah, yeah. We've certainly livestreamed all the meetings in charrettes in the past. We don't always do it, but we have the capability and capacity to do so. So we're happy to do that. I also, on the last comment with babysitting, you know, these are budget things, but, you know, also consider, say, evening meetings, what food or snacks may be available. That's usually a pretty important thing.
Agreed. Okay, thank you, Chair.
All right. I'm gonna follow up with a question exactly on that score there. So I want to make sure I understand what the drop-ins. The drop-ins are for after the charrette week. If I understand correctly, this is sort of a cleanup. Tell, explain that a little more.
Yeah, so the slide itself had an example of some boards that we produced, we did this in Birmingham. This is after the fact. We take the direction that we understand we're going in from the end of the charrette, summarize that onto exhibit, so, you know, it's clean and clear. And then we have a team of people in a location for a few days during a set number of hours, and those hours can be determined. And the public is invited to come in when they have time. Usually, what we've seen is that we get people who haven't been to the charrette, because it conflicted with, you know, something in their schedule, maybe they're out of town that week, maybe they couldn't come to a particular meeting because of another commitment, you know, or the time that meetings were at. So we try to be open with that time, and just allow people to come and go, as it works with their schedule, to engage with our team members, talk through the outcomes from the charrette and discussions, and then provide us direct feedback at that time.
All right. I guess, I think this is a related question. I notice your company name, and McKenna's shows up on the Birmingham Plan webpage. Is that, if we go to that webpage, is that going to give us a little bit of a preview of what you would do for us, or is that unrelated?
Some of it. It doesn't have the mapping tool, which I understand is used in the Parks Plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it doesn't have, say, everything that we intend to use, but it's similar in ways. It hasn't been built yet, so, you know, we can, we can take some input and direction on that, but yes, in general.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking is because, you know, looking at it, that was my question, is this, is this sort of the structure, is this the topics, is this the, you know, just to get a little preview?
Yeah, for the most part. I mean, it doesn't have as much, say, on history. You have a lot of, a good collection of planning documents to include in there. So I would say similar, but there are a few things that we intend to do that were in addition to what's on the Birmingham Plan page.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right, a couple of heads shook. No, you're probably, you have to go back to the jury. What do you have to do?
No, no, we're out for the day.
Oh, all right. Matt, do you want to close with some thoughts on what to expect in the near future, and more specifically, what to expect from the Planning Commission in those next steps?
Sure. What we're going to be doing next specifically is, you know, sort of two things in parallel. One is to do a lot of analysis of, say, the demographic profile of the community, this database analysis, the existing land use patterns, looking at existing available data, analyzing, analyzing the sort of built structure of the community. So we'll be doing all those sorts of things in parallel to the sort of interview process, and we hope, in the initial interview process for that, to begin to provide us information about what sorts of things we should be studying in greater detail in the beginning. And so some of that's going to be, come out of our discussions with each of you individually. That's also why it's, you know, important, if you have some specific groups, organizations that we should touch base with at this very, very beginning of the process, that would be helpful to know, which was noted already. And then, as we move into the roundtables and the survey, at that point, we'll collect all the information, bring that back to you, and have a discussion with you, to talk about, you know, what we feel that we've heard, and to get your opinion on this sort of analysis background, and what is, what really are the important topics as we've understood them, as we go forward. And so there's really a number of check-in points where we'd like to come to you in this forum, and discuss a lot of the details. Now, that can get lengthy, so it's probably good to think about, from a schedule standpoint, when we can schedule some longer working sessions, so that you all have an opportunity to read the material provided, and have a good discussion, because this is really about direction setting with this group. Direction setting in this beginning, you know, here about communications and input, then direction setting as we're getting into the charrette, which is, you know, what do we intend to study? And that's going to change as we engage with people during the charrette. Then, coming out of the charrette, the direction setting for writing the initial draft of the master plan. And then, as we go from there, to review the drafts, the drafts direction from you all in terms of changes that we should be making to those plans.
I have one follow-up question that I realized. When we talk about the roundtables, and we talk, refer to institutions, what groups do we include in institutions? Because one group, when I'm thinking about who we interview and such, like, someone who represents, again, a transit rider, or someone who represents some of the social service organizations, where do they fit in?
They typically, so, faith-based organizations, social services, nonprofits, that's sort of what we were proposing as the institutional--
Okay. Just one-- Just wanted to make sure that that's what that meant. Okay, thank you.
I guess the follow-up to that, then, it would be incumbent upon us to make sure that all of the institutions that we would want to take part are well-informed of their opportunities to take part, because it's not a specific engagement for them, it's more of an opportunity for them, and they may or may not choose to engage. But the, I guess, the task for us would be to encourage them to get the word out, that sort of thing, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. The frequent requests.
And similarly.
I was just gonna say, as we do that, you know, our request of you and our request of those people is to be ambassadors of the process and help, you know, amplify the opportunities.
Sure, to their constituents.
Correct.
Got it. Was there a follow-up comment there, Matt?
Yeah, sorry for, you know, for being on Zoom. I was just going to add something to have in mind for later is, when it comes to the meetings that we have during the charrette, this just reminded me from an institution standpoint, that we'll want to work with you all to determine what those specific meetings should be. You know, once we have the input, we can propose what we think they should be. But, you know, we want to verify that with you all, maybe we're missing some things. And when the timing is right and who we should be sure, you know, obviously, there's the invite to the general public to all these meetings, but who should we absolutely be sure that we get an invite out to? And so if there is, say, a meeting based on institutions in the community, which is a perfectly valid type of meeting, you know, what is the list of institutions that we should make phone calls to, for example?
Of course, we can make phone calls to them as well, all right? Right? Now, so, okay. Any other comments for our professionals here? Questions? All right, seeing none, I think, thank you very much, both of you, for being here. And I don't know when the next time we're calling you before us. What's the process here? Do we have another session with our consultant?
Not just yet. We'll continue to be in conversation with them and determine what the next steps are that involve bringing things back to you for your input or decisions on how we move forward into January and February and those particular steps that are highlighted. But I think at this point, it's incumbent upon us as staff to work with them to make sure we continue to get them the introductory documents, the base information for them to do some initial background, and try and work on setting dates, coming up with venues, things of that nature, before we get you that, and have you solidify those, so that we can do that as duly noted and well in advance, so that we can provide the public a widespread notice and well in advance, so that people are able to come.
All right, very good.
Just one comment on venues, too. And I hope during the process, and I think this is what's reflected in some of those community comment times and such, that we will make sure that some of the meetings are spread out in other parts of Royal Oak, not just here at City Hall, but making sure we get to our northern reaches and stuff, since our city's so spread out.
Yes, there'll be.
In the process, there are four meetings in neighborhoods, and so we'll essentially break the city into quadrants, and then we'll determine an appropriate location in those particular neighborhoods that is familiar to those residents, something that's not as formal as this setting. And I think that'll produce much better results.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Actually, do have one more quick question that I just forgot about, sorry. Can you help me understand a little bit on how you've been successful in reaching a rental population in terms of making sure they're aware of opportunities for engagement? Because I think oftentimes, they seem to get lost in the shuffle from the standpoint of, you know, many times their names are simply not on land ownership records. Mail is oftentimes the only way to get to the actual resident of that particular property. I'm assuming you've come across this in the past, can you maybe explain to us a little bit how you've, or things that you have done to try to reach a renter population a little bit better?
Well, Matt, you can jump in here, but the, we've, I think direct mail is probably the strategy that we've used most, when that's a specific constituency that we're trying to reach. I think the publications, the thing that arrives in every mailbox, that's an excellent idea. So I think the direct outreach, and we have some understanding of sort of where, which areas of the cities have higher percentages of rental populations.
I'll chirp in. The Insight publication goes to, when people say it goes to every household, people think a single-family home. Does go to them, goes to every single housing unit in the entire city. So that covers renters, owners, people moving that day, people. We have a list of every single address that has a rental license. We've drawn upon that numerous times in our office to do notices, and we have a relationship with many larger-scale property, rental property owners, in which we've requested that they hang fair housing posters in their offices or at various portions on the property so that people know. So we have excellent contact to be able to hang posters in those locations and a good working relationship as well. Yeah, so not only direct mailers, but posters and communication of that nature.
And I'd add, the yard sign that I had mentioned before was, you know, has been particularly good, just finding ways to get information out there in the community. And I think with the monthly publication, which, what was the name again? Remind me?
It's Insight, it's quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, Insight, quarterly. You know, Joe, we'll get that publication schedule and figure out how to best address different information that can be added to Insight, to talk about what the process is, who should be engaged, everyone. But, you know, even dealing with misconceptions, perhaps, and also what is upcoming. So I think that'll be very important. But again, other opportunities to get something succinct out in the community that, you know, somebody's going to, you know, walk by or drive by, and they don't have to say, look on a small piece of paper, or look through a magazine, is also very helpful.
So I just wanted to let you know, the deadline for the winter edition of the Insight Magazine has passed, just a couple of weeks ago. That edition would come out at the beginning of the year. So the next issue that you would be able to get information into would be the spring edition, which I believe comes out in April.
I mean, we also have, what is the name of the little newspaper that comes?
The Royal Oak Review.
The Royal Oak Review also has, obviously, space. I mean, we don't control it in the same way, but then there's news articles, but you can buy advertisements in there, too.
So it's interesting, the Royal Oak Review does not necessarily, does not go to apartment complexes.
Oh, okay, that's not good.
I know. Yeah, otherwise, and it's still a good vehicle, and, I mean, this is newsworthy. I mean, they would publish information about it because it's newsworthy, but again, it does not reach every address in Royal Oak.
There's some other avenues, too. Again, I'll come back to that. Wanting to both be specific to renters, the mailing address, the addresses that we have, religious institutions have bulletins or publications on a weekly basis, we can always tap into those things as well.
Yeah, I also think if you hit, if you hit just our big grocery stores, local grocery stores here in town, I mean, everybody buys food.
Senior senator.
Yeah.
All that.
All good comments? Is Matt still there, so we can say goodbye to him? There he is. Okay, thank you very much. We'll let you go for real this time.
All right, thanks, thanks, guys. Good everyone, I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And Paul, thanks for pinching in the meantime.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Nice to meet you all.
Good you came.
All right, so procedurally, I suppose we need to adjourn this meeting as well.
Well, public, there's public comment, but formally, there's a formal public comment portion of the agenda.
I'll be darned. Okay, call for the public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Hearing done, we'll move on. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.